Good evening. I'll call to order the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The record showed that all aldermen are present with the exception of Alderwoman Forney and Alderman Robinson, who was excused. First on the agenda tonight, I want to bring up a possible code of ordinance change as it relates to tents and specifically camping tent structures around the city of Ole Miss. There, I've received some complaints of tents being put up on city property, on possibly DEC property along the riverbanks. And there have been a number of tents now that I've noticed that have been up. And what I'm wondering is if they're serving as permanent housing structures. And maybe this kind of goes hand in hand in conjunction with the homelessness task force that the mayor's working on. But this is something I wanted to bring up to the common council and ask thoughts, opinions, and so on, whether or not we would want to consider putting a, some sort of limitation, not a complete ban, but a tent that is erected for a couple of months or more, and some of which are being occupied, is concerning. And so other communities have addressed this. I asked our city attorney to look into it, to give his opinion, whether or not the common council has the ability to regulate the use of tents in the city. And we do, he found a similar law in another community here that restricts the use of temporary canopy structures in residential zones. So I've passed this out to the common council and to the mayor just as a starting point. Something that is similar to this, you know, could be put in place for the use of tents as well. So I wanted to just get that conversation going and see what you think. Alderwoman McCall?
A few things. So first, this one that was passed out to us has nothing to do with sleeping tents. This is for pop-up tents, canopies, carports, which you also see all over the city. And these talk about no more than seventy-two hours and a three-month window, which I would not be in favor of. I agree with you that we cannot eliminate sleeping tents altogether, albeit whether you want to say the front yard, side yard, doesn't matter. Not everybody has a side or backyard. Side yard can be seen from the road, so I wouldn't say that that achieves your goal there anyways. Some of these tents that you're referring to have been up for more than thirty days. The current code in our code specifically states that they cannot be up there for more than thirty days underneath the temporary housing code. It's written in our code right now. So I wouldn't really be in favor of adding things in for even stricter and restricting it even more when what we have clearly isn't being enforced for some reason, I'm not saying why, I'm saying for some reason it's not being enforced. And in terms of not being in the DEC or on public, that stuff's already covered. And again, not being enforced. So why just hammer out another five-page legislation to not have it enforced when there's something already on the books? Now, if you want to look at saying like the sleeping tents, if you want to say like, hey, they can't be up for more than seventy-two hours and then, you know, and then say they got to come down or be moved. Because again, who's keeping count on that? Who's going to go around and be like, well, that one's seventy-two hours and it hasn't been a week? You put it back up early to like... So I mean, there's just more, I mean, but if you want to restrict it down to saying like that, because I think that somebody should have the ability to camp with their kids in their front yard, side yard. I know you agree with that, I'm just saying like, I think there's a way to do it with what we currently have. If you want to slide that down, just adjust that current one. And I can't remember the section number, but it's under, it's titled Temporary Housing. You could just simply change that down to, you know, a good time, like two weeks. It says thirty days right now.
And so that's a fair point. When I reached out to code enforcement, the response was, and I don't know if all the aldermen were copied on it or not, but the response was that tents weren't covered under our current code. And maybe it's a definition change that would, that we just need to include residential tents into the temporary housing? And then, you know, like you said, adjust it down from thirty days to maybe fourteen days, two weeks, or something like that? And go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, so... Let me find that number there. Well, I'll just read it. It's under Temporary Housing, under Structure. And it reads, "Any tent, trailer, or structure used for human shelter which is designated to be transportable and which is not attached to the ground, to another structure, or to any utility system on the same premises for more than thirty consecutive days." That's, that's a tent. It's under, like I said, it's under, oh, Section twelve dash seven-one, definitions. I did not look to see, I knew the purpose of your conversation was kind of the sleeping tents. I didn't really look into any of these other structures. I did not do that.
Alderwoman McCall?
Well, I didn't have my hand up, but I'll say something anyway.
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you said.
No, I actually agree with JR. I think that what we're trying to do, there's a few problematic areas. You know, I don't know as I drive through the city that I see it, you know, in a dozen streets. I think I see it in, you know, half a dozen, maybe. But those same ones, like the ones on East State, were up for months. So if indeed our current code under temporary housing falls under that, I would be in favor of just adjusting it maybe down to two weeks or what have you. So that, because I agree, you know, like I don't have like a, I have kind of an off-side yard. I don't have a backyard or anything. And I, I guess, you know, somebody could argue that it's kind of the front yard, right? And so I would want to be able to take a tent out there and tent with my kids. And if I only had a front yard, I'd probably want to do that too. So I don't think we want to be so restrictive so that you couldn't do that with your children, grandchildren, whatever, grandparents, I don't know. But let's, I agree, let's look at what we have there and see what maybe we need to adjust and what needs to be enforced. Because part of what we've had historically has been issues with enforcement and of what's existing. And so maybe if we revise that, revitalize it, and maybe make some adjustments, as we've talked about codes having more teeth in their ability to do things, that would be helpful for them also, perhaps.
John, just to go through.
Yeah.
Aside to your point, by definition, owner property such as yourself, you have two front yards. So you would have to honor the front yard setbacks on your first, it's First Street, right? First and your Henley. And that was from Ryan when I was looking at something on my building down there on Front Street, because it's on the front in Delaware, so it's, I had to deal with the two setbacks equally.
So I'm looking this up, JR, and all I can find is that it's listed as a definition. I don't see anything that actually limits, that specifies a restriction. It says a temporary housing is something that is less than thirty, or what, thirty days or whatever the timeframe, but I don't see, I see it as a definition. I don't see it as...
Okay. You can call through there some more, John?
Yeah.
In between.
Anybody else want to throw something out there?
No.
JR?
John, if I can, I mean, I'm a little torn here. I don't like creating new laws for anything. I think a lot of laws get created because of people that behave poorly and the laws are there to, and they end up protecting poor behavior and not folks that conduct themselves in good mannerisms. So if you think about it, the real problem with tents popping up is that it doesn't look good for your city. It's a sign that there's something wrong. That's what people really think about it. Has anybody in these tents really been causing trouble in their tent or on the property? Probably not. But it isn't a sign of good things, so I'm torn in that way. I don't know what the answer is.
And I guess it's, again, I wonder if it's not a symptom of the larger issue that's happening all over with homelessness.
Right.
I wonder how many, and again, it starts out just like we're seeing the homelessness numbers increase. I think we're starting to see the tents, little by little, okay? No pun intended, pop up. And people are sleeping in them. And so their friends, you know, staying in the backyard. The tents that I'm seeing aren't, you know, the kids camping out like I did, you know, in my house years back. So I think you're right, Jason, and I only bring this up because is it something that we want to have consideration on? And I do want to share if we do look at regulating this, which I don't think there is current regulation on it. But if we were to explore that, the fire chief made a solid kind of devil's advocate or concern. If we just pass something, right, that ultimately would result in shutting down, you know, people, all of a sudden, now they don't have a tent to live in in somebody's backyard, do they wind up on the street, right? If we don't have that process that might come from the homelessness task force that says we get them situated with the proper agency or whatever they need, does that just end up causing a bigger problem that I think is a fair concern?
I think, I agree with honey, as I was running around Ole Miss, I haven't really seen any tents. But I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We just established the homeless task force. I don't even think they matter or been organized yet. So I think we should let that committee get started and do their reviews. And in the meantime, refer our current code that JR's been developing out to our city attorney to see if there's anything that we can do to make that stronger or if he recommends any changes. Right now, I would just say, let's set on it, send it to Jack Hart in the meantime, see if anything can be done.
I'm a little torn by it because I don't think I understand why we think this isn't. Because it does have any tent, trailer, or other structure used for human shelter, which is designated to be transportable, which is not attached to the ground, which is interesting to have in there, to another structure or any other utility system on the same premises for more than thirty consecutive days. The hard part there is that what, things wouldn't be attached to the ground, right?
Yeah, because I heard that it wasn't so much, and I see why you said that, John, I do. And that would be a good question for Jack, if he could get that. Because, that's kind of funny too, is because when I stayed down, it's technically attached to the ground.
Right, yeah.
Right.
But then the next definition in there where I said that it's not connected to any, you know, any utilities.
Well, it says and.
Yeah, oh, does it, sorry.
Wait, or, you're right, that's an or to utility systems.
Yeah, so...
And that defines what temporary housing is, but what, what happens if it goes beyond that? If that's not mentioned?
I know, that's why I read like, does it suddenly become, at day thirty-one, is that permanent housing?
It's now permanent, I'm correct.
What, put in arden housing, like, no, 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 I don't understand. I looked at that kind of as restrictive of saying like, you can't have a tent for more than thirty days.
I take it the same as you can't have rest more than X number of inches, then it's a code issue. It doesn't, I mean, right?
But, but there has to be a law for it to be a code issue, right? For code to take action, what action are they going to take? There is nothing that specifies here is, we have the power to order that structure down.
So somebody wrote code and didn't bother to put in what to do about it? Is what I'm hearing?
John, I would think that we should just...
Table it?
Table it, like, because there's questions to get with Jack, because then I sit there and say, well, if there's no code, then why did you define what that was?
Right.
Temporary housing, oh, temporary housing code.
They defined temporary housing.
So then if a tent is defined as temporary housing, is there a code on temporary housing? Is, you know what I'm saying? So I think rather than just, we just ask for interpretation on that, Bill. And then, if you would, and then go, because I agree with Dave too about like the, you know, task force, but I agree with Eric, like, I mean, you can't just make a law and then just suddenly be like, ooh, that's a homeless problem, because it's still getting access.
Hundred percent. Yeah, no, hundred percent. And I don't, I don't, I don't think that's good policy, obviously. And so, you know, there's no PL. This was just to get a discussion going. And, you know, we can throw this back to code enforcement, to legal.
Do you want to push this on to another committee instead of Committee of the Whole?
Yeah, sure.
You want to leave it on there?
Yeah.
Just see if that makes sense.
Yeah, probably, probably public safety. And it's just because it's a discussion item, we can, we can, we don't have to do any action. So, so we'll just, that's fine. Anything else further for this conversation? Okay. Next up, we've got PL ninety-four dash four by Mayor Elio to amend and replace LL two dash fifty-nine, grounds for warrant or arrest to authorize the issuance of warrants or filing of default judgments for two non-appearances in Ole Miss City Court for local charges. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. This is a problem that the courts have brought forward to us. Right now, the way it stands, the police department issues more codes, more like issues appearance tickets in court. The people do not show up for the arraignment of the charges. So, and then they continually not show up. The court has no authority to issue a warrant. So by changing our law here, now the courts will be able to issue appearance, or issue warrants, or commonly called badge warrants, to get them into court, at least to appear.
Okay. That makes sense, but I'll open it up for conversation here. Alderwoman McCall?
I agree, we've been saying multiple times to be able to, to hold individuals accountable and that, you know, I think at times codes have said that their hands are shackled, the police department is shackled, with not being able to do things. So I support it.
Yep, same here.
Okay. All right, seeing no other conversation, all entertaining consequences.
House sponsors.
Motion is made by Alderwoman McCall, Second Amendment venue, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried, and is referred to the regular meeting Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, for public hearing. I'll make a motion to the Juror Committee of the Whole, can I get a second?
Sir.
Second Amendment venue, all in favor. I oppose, motion carried. Call to order the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, September tenth. For the record, please call the attendance room.
Alderman Benyon?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderwoman Forney? Alderwoman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson? Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
And President Crawford?
Here, please wrap.
By present, you have a floor.
We have four, please wrap some communications by divisions.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
Justice, supply, and advocacy to America. Should the Republic, which stands on one issue, under that, live with liberty and justice for all?
Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of previous regulation meeting.
Regular meeting of the Ole Miss Common Council was held on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, at six twenty-five PM. Present were Alderman Benyon, Panis, Forney, McCall, and Robinson. Alderman Crawford and Anastasia were absent. Alderman Robinson carried.
Okay. I'll make a motion to improvements of the previous regulation meeting, can I get a second?
Second, uh, Dr. Vance.
Alderman Vance. All of them, I oppose, motion carried. Community reports and unfinished council business.
Done.
Communications with the mayor?
Thank you. The only thing I have is that just remind everybody that tomorrow is the anniversary of nine eleven. And we're going to have a ceremony starting at noon in front of the missile building here to remember the victims of the nine eleven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Williams, communications?
Application for a liquor license, Johnson and Johnson Holdings LLC, doing business as Rannies dash three twenty-five, Main Street, Ole Miss.
City official reports?
Monthly report as a city auditor, month ended August two thousand and twenty-four. Quarterly report of the city auditor, three months ended August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Financial summary report as of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Proposed legislation or opposed?
PL number ninety-two dash twenty-four by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, resolution by council president. PL number ninety-three dash twenty-four, Alderwoman McCall, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for resolution by council president. PL number ninety-four dash twenty-four by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, by council president.
All right, before I open it up to public comment, I'd like to give an opportunity to any members of the public, to any members of the common council, to make statements at this time. All right, for the quick, please make public comment statement.
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
Okay, at this time, I will invite any members of the public panel. To the first, you may state your name and address for the record, you'll have five minutes. Anyone?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Elio, council members, and fellow residents. We are here tonight because we are holding the city accountable for a situation that has gone unchecked for far too long.
I'm sorry, name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Clarissa, hi, I'm Clarissa Spiller-Ivan, and I live at four thirteen South Third Street.
Thank you.
So I'm here with my family members and residents to speak on a situation that's gone unchecked for far too long. On August twenty-second, our family was attacked on our own property after a group in Franchot Park blasted vulgar music at an unbearable volume for hours. In an effort to restore some peace, we played our own music to drown theirs out. Their response was to jump the fence and attack us, our family, our neighbors, and those present. We were repeated, I was repeatedly tased, and our six-year-old nephew witnessed this terrifying attack. The emotional toll on him and all of us has been severe. This incident is not isolated. It's part of a disturbing pattern that has occurred over the past four to five years. Hundreds, and I mean hundreds, of police reports have been filed by myself, by my neighbors, my family, and yet the situation has only worsened. We have made numerous attempts to address this issue. We have asked the various groups to lower the music, even tried to befriend them by sharing food. I shared cupcakes, I shared popsicles with them before. I even helped them to set up a slip and slide by shoveling them my own hose through my fence. But these efforts have been in vain, and their behavior has only deteriorated, excuse me. The lack of enforceable park rules and enforcement has allowed this chaos to persist. I do want to take a moment to thank the council members. Council member Robinson, McCall, Forney, and Crawford, who did respond to my messages after this incident. Thank you. While none of you responded to the email that I sent to all of your city email accounts, I did hear back from these members via Facebook after the attack. And however, I did not receive anything from the mayor's office. And for me and my family, this speaks volumes about the lack of care for this issue that is affecting residents around Franchot Park, and visitors to Franchot Park, actually. So to make matters worse, now my family and myself are facing threats from the mother of one of the attackers. She has sent us harassing messages, further escalating the intimidation on our family. And just the fact that we've had to endure that intimidation after weeks and weeks and years and years of this happening, it's just, it's gone too far. Franchot Park has become a place where anything goes, and its reputation has suffered. People avoid it because they don't feel safe. Despite reaching out, it feels as if our concerns and safety are being ignored. We are holding the city accountable for the following. Number one, implement and enforce clear park rules. Particularly addressing noise levels and behavior, no one should have to face this kind of harassment. And in the city email that I did send to all of you, I did send a photo of a nearby city's park rules, which I found to be very helpful. They're, you know, not unusual. And it highlights things such as the park closing at dusk, no loud music without a permit, of course, no drinking or smoking, but no basketball after nine PM. All things that really have created a Wild West mentality in Franchot Park. Number two, to repair the low fence that enabled these individuals to trespass onto our property and launch such an attack. So there is a four-foot section of fence, which only, it's from the Fourth Street to Third Street. This four-foot section of fence is the section that always gets jumped by people. They've, they steal things, clearly they attack us, they tase us. It's, it's just a free-for-all for all people that can come back and forth and back and forth over that four-foot section of fence. The rest of the park fencing is, I think, what, six or eight feet? But it's this one section, and it was just never adjusted after the city had put in the walking trail. And I think that it's time for that to be addressed, because it's just, it's just not safe. And number three, to take immediate action to prevent further incidents. Because we cannot wait for another violent episode before something is done. So I really, I urge you to think about this, to take a look at the email that I sent. I also had an amazing meeting with Alderwoman McCall and Alderwoman Forney just a week before, a week prior to this incident happening. And we had discussed various improvements that would be great for Franchot, what it really needs, instead of putting in a grant sign, which I think is completely unnecessary, although it is a wonderful idea, but I'm, I'm not going to, not going to sugarcoat it, there's no need to put lipstick on a pig. You know, there's so many other park improvements that are necessary. Aside from the fencing, aside from the park rules, I want to highlight that the drinking fountain in Franchot has been broken for as long as I can remember. I think the last time I drank out of it, I was probably ten years old. Franchot definitely needs some improvements. And I really think that it's time for the city to focus on the safety aspect of people who are visiting the park, the safety aspect of people who are paying property taxes, and making sure that money is going into the city in order to make these kind of adjustments to our parks. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you. My name's Tim McBride. I live on First Street, first block south, been there forty years this year. Neighborhood's been my neighborhood since I was a kid. I wasn't born in Buffalo, but I grew up in that neighborhood. I'm here to support the Spillers. Generational family, most, most of us know the Spillers. They're a well-respected family in Ole Miss, and I'm here to support them. I see the beginning of terrible things. things happening. We remember, those of us who are old enough, Mayor, I'm sure you are, forty years, we've seen a lot of ebbing and flowing of difficulties in that neighborhood, in that area. I'd, I think now's the time to address it more seriously. More police patrols, uh, s- support some of the suggestions that Clarissa has mentioned. It's unconscionable that in their own yard, they would be physically accosted and tased, and as, as far as I understand now, it's not been addressed. There's been a, uh, there's been charges, they pressed charges, but there's been no resolution to it yet. I really think it's very important for the council to consider seriously, uh, the suggestions made by the Spiller family. Lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Crawford, uh, publicly. I accosted him and his family on the street about a crosswalk on First Street and West State, one of the most busiest pedestrian crosswalks, I would argue, in OAN. Uh, within a matter of weeks, Mr. Crawford had the big yellow signs, please be careful, there's people walking, so publicly, Mr. Crawford, thank you. Thank you, council.
Wish everything was that easy.
I'm sorry?
I wish everything was that easy.
Yeah, right?
He's made a sign for us, right?
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else?
Unfortunately, this is gonna pale in comparison to what, uh, my name's Adam Pernazar. Uh, I live on fourteen fifty-six, Indiana. Um, I've been in OAN maybe five or six years, um, and I'm here on behalf of the OAN Adult Soccer Group. Uh, when I first moved here, there was no adult soccer. Uh, there was a team, uh, and, uh, but they, they were playing at a very high level, and they would go to Buffalo. There was nothing recreationally. So I started a, uh, an OAN Adult Soccer League, and we, we have about sixty, seventy members, um, um, and sometimes people bring the younger players as well, um, which, and we generally allow people age of sixty and up. Um, we, you know, we play pickup, uh, just, I don't want to give too much information. We play pickup, uh, at least flights a week, and when there's enough players, we have leagues and tournaments. Uh, sometimes we play ten versus ten, sometimes we play four on four. Most of the people work, so, uh, depends on their schedule. Um, this summer, we had four teams. We played seven on seven. Uh, we, uh, it's recreational, it's good exercise, it's a social outlet, uh, and we have players of different skill levels. Um, we haven't quite gotten the young players, the ones that are just coming out of high school, or, you know, maybe the sixteen and overs to come, uh, but, uh, I can almost guarantee if they play with us, their soccer will improve. Um, um, and many of the people who play with us, they've worked long days, some of them, uh, travel even two to four hours. So, you know, this is one of the fun things they get to do. Um, the reason I'm here on, on the behalf of the group is, uh, one is we need a little more advertising so that the community knows we're around, and two, we need, uh, we need some fields, especially for winter, um, that we can play on. And winter, it gets dark by five-thirty, so during the weekday, we can't play. Uh, on the weekends, we can play at nine in the morning, you know, there's, there's enough parks and fields available where we can play. Now, there's artificial turf that's available. The school's not letting us use it. Uh, the, um, uh, in other jurisdictions that I've, that I've lived in, uh, it's, um, the school and the, and let's say the county, they, they share, uh, some of the school facilities. So it's not just for kids. They have, uh, classes for, uh, adult classes and so forth. I find that missing here. You know, there, there's, there's an adult, there's a senior center, but there isn't, you know, like, uh, when I lived in Fairfax, there was adult education classes, you know, basically something sociable. There isn't that going on here. So that would be a great help, uh, but also any help we can get with either fields or, um, or, um, also, you know, getting the word out to the public, but, uh, especially people who would want to play. Uh, now, I did speak with, um, Terry, uh, I think it's, yeah, Terry Belly, and she did advertise for us, so we got a few players that way. And I have to constantly, you know, go back to her and, uh, but, uh, anything like that would help, um, and if there's anything. Right now, OAN Middle School tells us that we, if we pay them thirty dollars an hour for a custodian, they'll let us use the field. You know, we've been playing for free for, uh, three, four years. I can't go ask people to start, I mean, I can, but, uh, if we can use those fields, they're, they're afraid of, um, um, they're, they're basically afraid of crime and stuff like that if they leave the field open, which is kind of weird because the other field is wide open, the, that's there, the one with the track, and they have let us use the other field in the past, and even this summer, they let us. It's Sarah Williams there. She's really good also, uh, don't ever lose her. Um, but, uh, and we've also been squatting on Allegheny Limestone, uh, in summertime. Uh, they have, they have big, uh, artificial turf fields there, and now we can't really go because there's kids playing there, but, uh, summertime was, it was nice to, to be able to kick the ball, have it bounce the right way, and not bounce the wrong way. So, uh, that's, that's basically it. Any, I appreciate any help or suggestions, uh, I can get, uh, short term, and so, so will all the people who play with us and who will play with us in the future. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you, and I'll, I'll be happy to talk to you, give you some point, some ideas after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I thought maybe you were here to recruit us to have a team.
If you guys are willing to play.
I thought, yeah, we, we would have our city team here. We've got some enforcers right here, there's a couple of enforcers.
Well.
We'll, we'll put together.
We have, we have, we, we have, we have one guy that's sixty years old that's playing with us.
There you go.
And I don't know if you know Mike Martel?
Okay.
He came and played once, and I've gotta beat him up to come again, so.
I'll talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone? Anyone else? Anyone else? At this time, I'll call public comment close. Finances and motions?
Uh. Resolution number ninety-seven dash twenty-four, PL number ninety-two dash twenty-four, to authorize the transfer of thirty thousand two hundred ninety dollars from general fund contingency to line item three six two zero point four five zero revolving revival fund.
All right, so we talked about this in committees. Questions, comments? Seeing none? I'll take a sponsor. Motion is made, Alderman Venion. I'll go ahead in a second. Will the clerk please call the board?
Alderman Venion?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forni? Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson? Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes with five votes. Resolution number ninety-eight dash twenty-four, PL number ninety-three dash twenty-four, to authorize the creation of capital fund number two four four, demolition of unsafe buildings.
Okay, talked about this one too. Comments or questions? Seeing none? Will the clerk please, uh, we need some sponsors.
I'll sponsor.
Sponsor is Alderman McCall. I'll go second. Will clerk please call the board?
Alderman Venion?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman, President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes five to zero.
Okay. Anything further? Seeing none? I'll, uh, I'd like to adjourn tonight in, um, in memory of the victims of tragedy of nine eleven. Uh, could I get a second?
Sir?
Second is Alderman Venion, all in favor?